Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's October 7, 2021 public meeting. Ms. Costa, can you please take the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Trueblood?
I am here.
Great. Commissioner McMahon?
I'm here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Argo?
I'm here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon?
Present.
Your timing is impeccable. Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Here.
Thank you. I'll note we have a quorum and Marcela Costa, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, the General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, Director of the Urban Design and Plan Review Division, are also in the meeting today.
Thank you. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there is no objection, the agenda is adopted as the order of business. We will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, with which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would also like to pause for a moment of silence for all of those affected by COVID-19 in our nation and around the world. In response to the COVID-19 guidance on public gatherings, NCPC will conduct its meetings online until circumstances change. I want to share how we will be conducting commission business. Votes by the commission will be conducted by roll call. When commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, and request to be recognized. During commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any questions or comments. During deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical issues. When you wish to put forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, identify yourself, and make the motion. Before we proceed with the rest of the agenda, in the absence of a chair, the commission must nominate and vote on who should run this October meeting, which is the second agenda item. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move. This is Commissioner Wright. I'll move that Ms. White lead the meeting.
Arrington, Commissioner Dixon, I second.
Thank you. A motion that I, as Vice Chair, run our meeting today has been moved and seconded. Ms. Costa, can you please take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. The motion was made by Commissioner Wright and seconded by Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you. The eyes have it. Thank you, fellow commissioners, for electing me to run this online meeting. Agenda item three is for the commission to approve its meeting schedule for 2022. Ms. Costa sent that around, and I'm wondering if there are any questions or concerns about the schedule. If not, is there a motion to approve the 2022 commission meeting schedule?
Seconded.
Ms. Costa, can you please take the vote by roll call? Commissioners, please say yes, no, or abstain.
Thank you. The motion by a nose was by Commissioner Dixon with Commissioner May seconding. Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Abstain.
Okay.
Thank you. The eyes have it. We have a calendar. Our next agenda item is the report of the Vice Chair. Last week, the public had the opportunity to view the recent installation near the Washington Monument in America Remember, which commemorates those lives lost to COVID-19. This art installation was a powerful reminder of how impactful and moving temporary commemorative works can be in our country's most symbolic landscapes. And with that note, I want to say that I am thrilled that the Andrew Mellon Foundation has funded the Trust for the National Mall's Beyond Granite Proposal, which will be conducted in partnership with NCPC and the National Park Service. This project, which builds upon the commission's 2016 Memorials for the Future Competition and Other Commemorative Work Studies, will result in eight to 10 temporary commemorative installations in and around the Mall and Washington DC. We hope that this demonstration program will lead to a long-term program for temporary commemorative works. Beyond Granite will be an incredibly important way for us to promote a more diverse and inclusive commemorative landscape in the nation's capital, one that ensures that we are telling more stories reflecting our country's history, aspirations, and providing different perspectives. Equity is a critical priority for the Biden administration, and last month, the commission discussed how NCPC, along with other federal agencies, can contribute. This project will be an important contribution to a broader national equity discussion. We thank the Mellon Foundation for their leadership in this arena and for their generosity, and we look forward to working with the Trust for the National Mall, the National Park Service, the District of Columbia, the Smithsonian Institution, and other federal and local stakeholders. Agenda item five is the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to add my appreciation to the Andrew Mellon Foundation for the generosity in funding the Beyond Granite Temporary Commemoration Initiative. A special thanks to the staff team who wrote the grant proposal, Executive Vice President of the Trust for the National Mall, Teresa Durkin, and her colleagues, and our NCPC staff, Mike Sherman, Joanna McCran, Belinda Linsky, and Angela DuPont. We also congratulate NCPC's Megan Dalker, who was recently named Senior Urban Planner in our Physical Planning Division. This concludes my presentation. You have a complete report in your packets, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Does the commission have any questions? Hearing none, we'll go to Agenda Item Six, which is the Legislative Update. Ms. Skyler?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I do not have anything to report today.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Skyler? Hearing none, we will move to Agenda Item Seven, which is the Consent Calendar. There are five Consent Calendar items on this month's agenda. The first is for approval of preliminary and final site and building plans for a guard booth at the Quadrangle located at 1050 Independence Avenue Southwest. This project was submitted by the Smithsonian Institution. The second is for approval of site and building plans for the St. Elizabeth's East New Hospital, as submitted by the District of Columbia Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development. The third is for approval of preliminary and final site development plans for the AT&amp;T antenna installation at the Sutland Federal Center Tower in Sutland, Maryland, submitted by the General Services Administration. The fourth is for approval of preliminary site and building plans for the P203 Crash Rescue Station Number Two for its renovation and addition at Joint Base Andrews in Camp Springs, Maryland, submitted by the Department of Defense. Finally, the fifth item is for approval of final site and building plans for the P734 Mainside Parking Garage at the Marine Corps Base Quantico in Quantico, Virginia, submitted by the Department of Defense. Are there any questions from the commissioners regarding the Consent Calendar items? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
This is McMahon. So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Argo. A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion in a second and take the vote by roll call?
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner McMahon, seconded by Commissioner Argo, and with that, Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May? Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright? Commissioner Wright?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion is carried. First on the open session agenda is Item 8A, Approval of the Final Master Plan for the Goddard Space Flight Center in Greenbelt, Maryland. Mr. Hart?
Good afternoon. I'm hoping that you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
And see the presentation as well?
Yep, looks good.
Excellent. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and members of the commission. The National Aeronautics and Space Administration has submitted a final campus master plan at the Goddard Space Flight Center for the commission's approval. The commission reviewed the draft master plan in June of this year. The previous master plan was approved by the commission in 2003. So as a reminder, the commission's review of final master plan focuses on a few concerns, and they are identified here. Has the applicant addressed previous commission comments? Are there any unresolved issues? Are there any off-site impacts? What's the phasing for the master plan? Is the TMP complete, as well as the landscape and stormwater plans? Are they complete as well? The commission's draft review in June included comments and requests focused on these items that are summarized here. And in general, the comments were regarding transportation, in particular, meeting the NCPC parking ratio, land use, environmental protection and natural resources, as well as historic preservation, were all issues that were raised at that time. And I'll describe Goddard's responses later. So as I discussed, the existing conditions as part of the draft master plan a few months ago, I will not go into detail here again, but will incorporate my findings, staff's findings and recommendations into this presentation. And as a refresher, just to make sure we are remembering where this is located, the Goddard Space Flight Center is located in Prince George's County. It's outside the Capitol Beltway, I-495, and it's just east of I-295, which is the BW Parkway. And it's also to the north of 193, which is Greenbelt Road. While the site is composed of five distinct land areas, which are shown here in red, most of the development is within the main campus here. The Greenbelt Campus is approximately 1,300 acres with just over 1.1 million square feet of development. There are approximately 7,900 staff on the campus and an additional 400 employees that are off-campus in leased facilities nearby in Greenbelt. The Goddard Space Flight Center was first established in 1959 with the land that you see here for the main campus acquired in 1961 and '62, and then subsequently to that, there were other parcels added to the area. And taking into account all the factors and the existing conditions, the Goddard Space Flight Center produced an opportunities and constraints map. It includes areas to avoid as well as potential development areas. And in this case, this area in the center here was seen as being the location for development. So this brings us to the final master plan. The Goddard Space Flight Center conducted some discussions with stakeholders, many of the employees on the campus, and developed this vision statement as a result of that. And the vision statement is to create a sustainable, walkable, and vibrant campus comprised of modern adaptable facilities within a natural setting. Staff agrees with this and supports this vision statement. As I noted at the draft master plan, in June, this presentation will primarily be focused on the main campus, which you see here. One of the big moves of this master plan is to concentrate development on campus into a linear pedestrian zone that's delineated by new and existing buildings in the central portion of the main campus. In addition, the final master plan also includes a reduction in the amount of building square footage over the life of the master plan by 1 million square feet, a reduction in the overall number of parking spaces, and this is 2,321 employee spaces will be removed from the campus, preservation of the woodland areas, including and an introduction of a campus-wide green space network typology, and the addition of quite a few pedestrian and bicycle amenities on campus. Because of all this, staff commends the Goddard Space Flight Center on a final master plan which seeks to improve the campus through the reorganization of the main campus to create a linear pedestrian zone, the reorientation of the main entrance on ISAT Road near the new visitor center, additional amenities for bicyclists and pedestrians on campus that can promote alternative modes of commuting and mobility, additional street trees throughout the roadway network that will increase the tree canopy on the campus, and the removal of over 2,300 parking spaces, which will help it meet the one-space-per-two employee parking ratio that's prescribed for this installation. And so, staff recommends that the commission approve the Goddard Space Flight Center final master plan for use by the commission, however, defers approval of the number of special-use parking spaces until the applicant submits an assessment of their use as part of the TMP update in two years. And I'll discuss this deferral approval later on in this presentation. The commission's comments from June are categorized and summarized here, and I'll describe how the Goddard Space Flight Center addressed them in the final master plan. And these main topics are transportation, in particular, the meeting the one-to-two parking ratio, and performing a parking lot study regarding natural resources and sustainability. This was really around understanding stormwater management, energy reduction, as well as tree preservation. And finally, the last topics are land use and historic preservation, which focused on the Section 106 consultation process, as well as the disposition of Area 400. So the first issue is about transportation, which is primarily regarding parking. In June, the commission recommended that Goddard develops specific parking ratio targets in two-year increments in their TMP, including viable strategies that will allow them to meet the one-to-parking ratio goal, and also to provide a parking plan that identifies and describes the existing amount of parking and the amount of parking to be added and removed on campus. In response to these recommendations, Goddard staff first provided a count of existing parking on the campus, which is shown here. And I know this is a lot of information on here, so I really wasn't showing it for you to kind of look at all the details. It's really about and the illustrative nature of what they went through to understand the parking on the campus. This count was helpful for staff to understand the parking distribution around the campus. Once the parking count was completed, Goddard developed nine parking zones for the campus. You can see Zones P1 through P8, as well as the visitor center parking areas in this plan. You'll see that this plan also shows a quarter-mile walking radius, just for some scale, and that's focused around the P5 and the P7 areas. These are the most densely concentrated portions of the campus in terms of the number of employees. And developing all of these nine zones helped to staff to understand the parking situation even better. So next, Goddard created parking space categories, which are described here. And generally speaking, there are two groups of categories. There are employee spaces and parking and special-use spaces. And I'll note that the special-use parking space categories are highlighted here, while the rest are included in the employee count. So first, looking at the employee spaces, it's helpful to understand the employee demand, the mode split for kind of the current timeframe, as well as the 2037 timeline, the end of the master plan. We see that this is the final TMP numbers. We have a single occupancy vehicle rate of 89% in 2016, and then in 2037, that rate drops to 47%. At the same time, the telecommuting rate is 0.4% in 2016, and then 40% in 2037. This increase in telecommuting is really the reason why the commission wanted Goddard to demonstrate how it could meet the parking ratio when it reviewed the draft master plan. So as a result, the Goddard staff worked with NCPC staff, showing what the phase development would look like and how that paired with the reduction of parking on the installation. This process shows that the change in the amount of employee parking on campus is approximately, actually, it's a little over 2,300 spaces between now and the end of the last phase. And staff notes that the final TMP states that the single occupancy vehicle mode split will decrease from 89% today to 47% in 2037, primarily due to an increase in teleworking employees. And therefore, staff finds that the proposed parking ratio of one space for every two employees in 2037 is consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. So now, while employee parking, the employee parking definition is self-explanatory, I thought special-use parking needed a bit more explanation. And this consists of parking for visitors, parking for events, accessibility purposes, service vehicles, and short-term parking for campus facilities such as daycare, cafeterias, health clinic, and the recreation center. And I'll note that Goddard has campus visitors separated in two groups. There are those visitors that are going to small meetings with employees, and they can be spread throughout the campus, and other visitors, another group of visitors, who will be attending events at one of the auditoriums on the campus, and the locations of these auditoriums are identified here on this slide in red. This is the location really for these auditoriums in 2037, and Goddard notes that the parking space for auditoriums is at one space for every two auditorium seats. These special-use parking areas include 2,026 spaces for this purpose in the current phase, and that will be reduced to 1,595 spaces by 2037, and that's according to the final master plan. So while Goddard staff is aware of how many events were occurring on campus several years ago before the pandemic hit, the pandemic has altered the status quo. I think we can all agree on that. So it's unclear to staff whether the number of spaces dedicated to visitors and event parking may change in a post-pandemic world. We understand that virtual events may become more prevalent, and attitudes may change about traveling to events or other unforeseen factors. So to better understand the parking on campus, following the pandemic, staff requests that the Goddard Space Flight Center return to the commission in two years after the Goddard Space Flight Center's pandemic return to work plan is implemented with two things: an update to the TMP demonstrating how it's meeting the interim parking ratio goal, and an assessment of the special-use spaces on campus. And this should include a few things, such as the number of special-use spaces used at each venue, who is using the spaces, the number and frequency of events throughout the year, et cetera. So moving on to natural resources and sustainability, in June, the commission recommended that the Goddard Space Flight Center provide more detail about stormwater management, the change in impervious surface area, and the overall energy reduction anticipated with the implementation of this master plan, as well as providing a tree preservation plan. So the Goddard created a sustainability element as part of the master plan, and there were a number of priorities that were included for the campus. And these are what's bulleted here. And the first among them is the effective energy usage to reduce utility costs, utility costs, reduction of the carbon footprint and reliance on carbon-based energy sources, and increasing infrastructure resilience. Also, the reduction of the Senate's footprint through demolition, instituting sustainable acquisition procurements, outreach to increased support for sustainable initiatives, and increasing LID, as well as pollinator habitat on campus. After reviewing this information, staff finds that the final master plan includes a strong commitment to sustainability, including a robust stormwater management and tree preservation plan, energy reduction strategies, as well as the production of renewable energy. Here is the proposed green space network that I mentioned earlier. This is a robust green space network plan that includes a hierarchy of green spaces, from primary green spaces that are part of the linear pedestrian zone to secondary and naturalized and wooded spaces. The final master plan also defines the space, the different types of green spaces. The preliminary green spaces, these are the most formal and structured spaces incorporating manicured landscaping, site furnishings, hardscape areas, as well as signage. Secondary green spaces would be a mixture of formal and informal areas that include building entrances, informal gathering spaces, and landscaped streets. There are naturalized areas, which really include all of the non-forested areas outside the primary and secondary green space areas. And then finally is the woodland area, and I think this kind of speaks for itself. The plan includes some images to demonstrate what the characteristics might be for each type of green areas on campus, and I've just shown an example of some of these primary, secondary, and naturalized spaces. The master plan also includes guidance on plant materials, excuse me, guidance on plant material selection by identifying the following objectives: upholding the preference for native species, avoiding invasive species, enabling the campus to be maintained in a manner that has a minimal impact on the environment, preserving and enhancing existing urban trees and forested lands, improving the overall visual quality of the installation, understanding the scale and comfort for pedestrian environments, having to screen unsightly views or elements, and the development of diverse ecosystems such as meadows and woodlands on the campus. For stormwater management, the strategy is shown here. It includes the protection of nearby shorelines and surface waters from erosion, incorporating LID design strategies into future development, reducing impervious surface areas, using a watershed-based approach for improving water quality, incorporating sustainable landscaping, as well as exploring low-maintenance solutions for the campus. And the stormwater management plan for the campus seeks to meet the 20% restoration requirements, which is part of the MS4 permit for the Goddard campus. Goddard Space Flight Center also provided the projected energy use for the next 20 years. One of the main elements is to construct a central heating and power plant to be run on natural gas, which will significantly reduce its reliance on the electrical grid and reduce its overall power consumption by approximately 28% by 2041. In addition, the Greenbelt Campus Utility Contract is requiring renewable energy use to increase to 50%. Staff supports the development of a central utility and power plant, as described in the final master plan, which will improve overall energy efficiency for the campus and reduce the overall campus energy usage. The commission requested that Goddard explore rooftop solar for the campus buildings. However, Goddard noted that this is not possible because of mechanical and scientific equipment, which is used on the rooftops. The final master plan does identify solar panels on canopies in some of the parking areas on the main campus, as well as possibly within these sustainability initiative areas, which are identified on campus. You see them here outlined in yellow. These areas are set These areas are set aside for possibly installing solar panels or geothermal systems. Regarding tree preservation, the master plan identified that it will comply with the Maryland Forest Conservation Act, which has a goal to minimize the loss of Maryland's forest resources during land development by making the identification and protection of forests and other extensive areas an integral part of the site planning process. Additionally, Goddard addresses the intent of the NCPC policy with new construction through the compliance with leadership in energy and environmentally, excuse me, environmental design or LEED. Goddard notes that all new construction must meet the LEED Silver Certification, which considers green solutions, including the increase of the tree canopy. Staff finds that the applicant's tree replacement plan meets NCPC's tree replacement policy in the comprehensive plan. And finally, moving to land use and historic preservation, the commission requested additional information about mitigation for the removal of some buildings within the historic district, and in addition to an update on the disposition of Area 400. And I'll note that the Area 400 wasn't a recommendation per se, but the commission had a fairly lengthy discussion about it in June. So regarding historic preservation, the master plan identifies an eligible historic district on the main campus, which is this area that's outlined here in purple. This is the same location as the main, this, most of the development that will happen on campus. The master plan will require the demolition of some contributing buildings in this historic district. Staff understands the applicant intends to initiate Section 106 consultation with the Maryland Historic Trust for individual projects' submittals in the future. As no consultations regarding historic preservation have occurred for the campus, staff recommends that the commission encourage the Goddard Space Flight Center to include NCPC and other local stakeholders in this consultation process. And while there wasn't a specific recommendation as part of the draft master plan, the commission discussed Area 400 at the June meeting. Subsequent to that meeting, the Goddard Space Flight Center staff met with both GSA, as well as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, to understand the disposition process for the parcel. And I'll note that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is important because they actually oversee the Patuxent Wildlife Refuge, which is just to the north of this site. Goddard staff also noted ongoing discussions with the City of Greenbelt and the Prince George's County Planning Office, and have agreed to work with both entities in determining the future of this parcel. All of these conversations are ongoing. So it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission approve the Goddard Space Flight Center final master plan for use by the commission. However, defer approval of the number of special use parking spaces until the applicant submits an assessment of their use as part of the update, the T and P update in two years. And as I've already gone through the rest of the recommendations, I'm not going to read them. They are included in the executive director's report. And that concludes my presentation. And we have a representative of the applicant for Goddard Space Flight Center that's here to say a few words. Thank you very much.
Hi Carlton.
Hi Carlton.
Can you, can you see me?
Can you see me?
See me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Great.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say a few words on behalf of the Goddard Space Flight Center. I want to thank Carlton Hart and Diane Sullivan.
Ally, for, I'm sorry, for one second, can you introduce yourself? I didn't do that.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I am Ally Pete. I'm the facilities master planner for Goddard Space Flight Center. And so I've been working closely with NCPC, Carlton Hart specifically, and Diane Sullivan from inception, when we started the process to develop our master plan, all through the review processes for our draft master plan review and our final master plan review. So I just wanted to say, extend our thanks to Carlton Hart and Diane for your time and attention throughout this master plan review process. As I said, way back from when we initiated the pre-briefs to our submitted, the draft submittal, all of our engagement between the draft submittal and final submittal, and then even after the final submittal, discussing all of your comments and making sure that we had the information necessary to develop the plan according to NCPC standards. And specifically, I want to thank you, Carlton, for all the time you spent. You really thoroughly took the time to understand our plan, thoroughly review it, and be able to communicate it back to your commission. You listened to our questions, met with us numerous times, spent some good amount of time with us, provided us with your feedback, in general, really supported us and guided us through this NCPC review and approval process. So I, I just want to thank you for that. And thank you to the NCPC staff as a whole for your support. That's it.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I can, I can't hear Beth. Are you, were you speaking earlier?
Thank you, Mr. Hart. I was just waiting, are there any other presentations from you or Ms. Pete or any of the team?
No, there are not.
Entertain, oh, sorry.
Sorry, from, this is, I'll turn my camera back on. No, from our end, there are not any additional presentations or reviews, but we are available here to answer questions.
Right. I was just going to ask if you were ready for questions. Any questions from our commissioners? I see Commissioner Dixon has his camera on.
Yeah, I want to, first of all, compliment everyone for the work they've done hard and everyone. NASA is one of my go-to channels on television, and I'm always impressed with the use of solar in space. Everything up there is dependent upon solar. I really wonder, and I appreciate throughout the report that was mentioned of the use of solar. I'm sure we hope there'll be other non-fossil fuel energy producers in the future that we can use, but I really want to be sure that we drill down this beat on whether or not, you know, you guys use it all over, all around us in space. How aggressive can, have you been about trying to find solar opportunities at Goddard? And other, we don't have any control over other facilities, but there's a lot of rooftops, and I know there's, there's things that you have on it, but my question is pretty clear. The solar, we worry about, and we appropriately worry about the trees, the water, the parking, but we, and we come down pretty hard on those things. Solar, that's my question.
Okay, so we do have as part of the additional, a couple of things. We do have some areas identified on the Greenbelt Campus that are ideal for solar. We, or solar potential, you know, additional study has to be done. And the other thing that we did submit as part of this is our essentially sustainability elements that did include a look at solar and incorporating solar into our overall energy strategy, energy reduction strategy. So it's definitely part of what we'll be looking at as we move into, you know, as we move into the future, I guess. Yeah, there was a specific question about solar on the rooftops, which is not something that we want to do at Greenbelt, but there are other opportunities for that, that we're definitely pursuing.
Yeah, also, there are a lot of developments occurring, sometimes thanks to you guys, of solar that don't, that's not represented by panels, but it's window coverings and other ways, film, the new technologies out there, and you guys had cutting edge of technology. So if it can be done anywhere, it could be done with you guys. So I hope you're, hope you're doing that. We, I always worry about all this energy we just waste every day when the sun shows, and we're burning, burning gas and fossil fuels to keep things going. Enough of me, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon.
Your work, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? If not, I'll open it up for discussion. Commissioner, did you, did you want to ask a question?
I did have a quick question, and I think it's probably for Mr. Hart. So, and apologies if this, if this was said previously, but has, is there any discussion of kind of the alternative means of transportation, like bicycle facilities or things like that in this master plan?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they actually are introducing quite a number of bicycle and pedestrian facilities for the, for the master plan. There are trails that are being included. I didn't actually show any of the roadways, but all of the roadways are being retrofitted with bike paths. So there's going to be multimodal, you know, on the roadways that are existing. They are incorporating bike trails, or I guess pathways, from Greenbelt Road, which is just to the south, into the facility near the main entrance. There are also looking at and trying to work with the local agencies, incorporating trails along Greenbelt Road itself. So as people try to kind of come to there, they would, you know, be able to have some facility that would allow them to access the facility on site. And if I recall, there are actually bike, bike places to, to park bicycles that are all around the campus. So they are definitely wanting to do that. That's, that's an integral part. I didn't focus it on this presentation because most of the conversation was about the things that the commission had, but previously in my earlier presentation back in June, I had some images that showed what the, the streets would look like, and that they had a variety of types of paths. I think there are three or four different types of paths that they are considering as well as part of the master plan. So, yeah, it's definitely a, an integral part of the master plan.
Thank you.
I see Commissioner Wright, you have your hand up. Did you want to ask a question?
Yes, I did. So there's a 16-year planning horizon to go from 0.4% to 40% teleworking. And I, I guess I would like to hear a little bit more about that margin. It seems, on the one hand, so this is sort of a comment too, can I do that?
Sure.
It, it seems like a long time, and I understand lots of reasons that people have been, before the pandemic, didn't have telework to a great extent, was not just culture, but also the lack of technology. So, and, and at GSA, we were very fortunate to be ready to roll on the technological front, and it does take a while, but 16 years seems a lot on the one hand. So there's a question, is it, or is, and it seems odd that NASA lacks the technology. So my question is, with all, having said all that, why, why is it going to take that long? And can we hear a little bit more about why? And, and then, and then to also speculate and to assist with this question, is it also just because, like everyone else, no one looks like the, what the post-COVID scenario is going to look like? I guess it just seems like a big jump from 0.4 to 40%, and I want to hear more about how that's going to happen.
Okay, so yes, we, in our previous plan, plans, it was projected to be 0.4, and obviously, the, with the pandemic, it opened up horizon, our horizons or eyes or capacity to be able to project that that number will increase substantially over time. So the 40% is by 2037, but we have a grad, it's in the T and P and the master plan, there is a, it's a graduated approach, and so we kind of have, the entire master plan we have phased, so the 40%, the teleworking from now to the 40% is phased over that time. So the other thing I'll just say about teleworking is that, so it kind of, you know, took everybody a bit, but, you know, the pandemic took everybody but by surprise. So now what is, now what NASA is doing, so the, sorry, the telework measures that kind of are happening now were implemented very quickly. So now what NASA is doing is they're looking at it from an agency perspective, and then each center, so each center is looking at it as well, sort of, and right, right now what we're doing is we're, we're working with the agency as they develop their overall guidance on telework policy. But each site, Greenbelt, you know, is, is one of NASA's site centers. So we're having, looking specifically, kind of doing a trial runs of what types of areas, what, how to distribute teleworking, what types of positions would be best for that. So we're kind of doing a trials, trial testing. And from that, we will then work with the agency to receive whatever that specific guidance is from there, from them, as far as implementing teleworking. So while it seems like all of a sudden there's all this teleworking happening, in order for it to be implemented sort of on a more permanent basis, it is going to take some more time. And so we're just following the agency process and the guidance that they are developing now. But, and that's why we said, okay, we can't, we're not going to say that it's going to happen right away, but we are envisioning that over time, and all the strides that, you know, NASA has made, Goddard has made, Greenbelt has made in this area, that we will be able to get to that 40% by 2037. And just, so it is incrementally done, but we're not starting at like pandemic levels to start it. We're, we're not, we're, we're not envisioning that the pandemic levels are going to remain, you know, we're going to go back to normal and then implement, implement it over, implement the policy over time.
I just, it does, well, kinda. It does, and my comment is that that's still, 16 years is a long time, even for government to implement. It seems like a long time. And, and I, I'm going to gather that there's some cultural resistance to it, because it, that, that, even a phased approach, and even if, if you, as we all were caught by surprise, and lots of agencies had zip in terms of technology, but even if you were starting from scratch, I would just say that 16 years seems a long time to get to, to that number.
Commissioner Wright, this is Mr. Hart. I think that one of the things that we're also looking at is, we, as you're probably remember, we are, have a check-in on the T and P every two years, and part of that check-in is for, is for something like this. And so I agree.
We'll continue to mag, I hope.
That's a long time, but I think that what we're really looking at is, how can we kind of evaluate this, and how are agencies evaluating this over a period of time? And, you know, maybe there is a 0.4 now, but in two years, it may actually, you know, be more than what we, you know, what they think it's going to be. So I think that the, that we were looking at it as, the 2037 timeframe is, that's kind of the end of the process, but as you go along the incremental steps, there may be kind of bigger jumps as we get towards that. But, you know, we have to kind of wait and see for some of this.
Yeah. And that's just. I assume, I mean, there's a lot of rejiggering that has to be done everywhere in the after times. I mean, so I understand that. I just hope that it, it's a shorter horizon.
I think that's a really thoughtful discussion. And Mr. Hart, I particularly like what you were saying, that there will be check-ins, and I think what will be helpful is to see how you're going to try to set those milestones. But, but I understand why you're targeting the 16-year period to the end of the process, but on the face of it, it is, what's the magic to the 16? But it has to be tied back to the master plan. Any other questions? Ms. Wright, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. If there are no other questions, I will open it up to the commission for discussion. I will start with Commissioner May, and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. So please keep your webcams on during the discussion. Mr. May?
Thank you very much. I don't have a whole lot to say. I think that the plan has improved significantly, or has addressed the concerns that were raised by the commission at the last review, particularly with regard to parking projections, and of course, attending to the impacts that will come from increased telework. So overall, I think it's very positive. And I would just add my thanks for the efforts on the part of NASA to work with my colleagues at the Fish and Wildlife Service regarding the one parcel that may wind up leaving NASA's control. control and could conceivably wind up part of the record. So thank you very much for all of that and look forward to hearing more in a couple of years on what's happening with the that component of the parking that's not quite settled. Yeah. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Arco.
Yes, I thought I really enjoyed the presentation. I thought it was thorough and as other commentators have indicated, oh, sorry, my camera. And as other commentators have indicated, addressed the concerns particularly that the that the commission had had. The only thing I would say, the question, I had the same issue with the 16-year time span. And it may be that and my only suggestion would be that it it might behoove us to put kind of a phase in guideline or something in our recommendations to be at to be clear about our expectations for that for that phase in, since it's a it's a concern, I think, probably for the majority of the of the commissioners, I would guess.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
I don't have anything further, really, except for, wow, Mr. Hart, you got quite the the fan club out at NASA. The 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 plan does respond to our previous comments. I don't really have anything more. The check ins are good enough for me if if the if the commission wants to add a guideline or aspirational guidelines, that's okay with me, too. But I think it's enough that we're checking in every two years, provided that we actually do it. I mean, you know what I'm saying, that we do it in a deliberate and substantive way. That's it.
Commissioner Wright, thank you for articulating that. I should go back to Commissioner Argo and and ask to make sure I'm clear. Does that address your concern, Commissioner Argo, the the idea that or did you want to?
I think that's fine. I think that's fine. I think it's a, you know, again, it's a long time span. And, you know, to have it to have it organized in a way that's efficient and responsive, I think is fine. And I leave it to staff to stand on top of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
Yeah, I would just, I think it's a good job all around. I would suggest that maybe they provide some kind of a presentation like this, even a snapshot or briefing of it to their channel, NASA channel, so that those of us who are NASA followers also understand that there are things being done that are modernizing and moving their facilities forward. Sometimes they go very historical, but not always current, except for launches, et cetera. Anyhow, that's just a thought. Thank you all. Great job.
I love that idea. That's a great idea. I would second that. Commissioner Cash.
No additional questions or comments, but I do want to thank everyone for being very responsive to the commission. I wish that we get them every time we we send back some comments and get that much construction. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Nothing to add for me, but thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
I also have nothing to add, except if if Mr. Dixon wants it on the channel, we should put it on the channel. He loves that channel. So let's do that. Yeah.
Commissioner Trueblood.
Thank you. I just I agree with what other commissioners have said regarding timelines. I'm going to offer some, I don't know if it's unsolicited advice, but just some advice maybe outside of the parameters of this particular master plan, which is, well, within the plan. But but I think what we see there is lots of really interesting public spaces. And I know that we have the planning, have been thinking about our public realm, we do public life studies. And I think maybe one step that that the that Goddard should think about is what how do you build those really wonderful public spaces and the green and and, you know, how do you create places, formal places or informal places for people to linger and eat? And how does that how do your food services relate to all of this? You know, I think these are more maybe operational, more maybe architectural, but I think they'll be kind of critical to realizing the vision of what this new master plan is trying to achieve.
Great comment. Commissioner McMahon.
I'm here. Waiting for the camera. Come on. No, I really can't add much more than what the other commissioners said. I support all those comments. I think obviously a 16-year timeline absolutely deserves interim check ins with their progress, especially on transportation. Thanks.
Well, thank you. I would also just like to add my thanks to NASA. It's an exemplary plan, and I really appreciate that sustainability is the driving vision, and it really resulted in a compact development that is centered around pedestrians. I also want to associate myself with Commissioner Trueblood's comments that these spaces can be really special for the employees and visitors. So I think that advice was well stated. And Ms. Pete, I really want to thank you for your comments about our team at NCPC. As Commissioner Wright said, it sounded like a fan club, but I do want you to know it is great that our staff does get that type of recognition. We have amazing professionals who are very dedicated to working with all of our applicants to achieve the best results. So it was really great to hear about your experience with our team. So I thank you for that. So with that, is there a motion to approve the final site and building plans?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just, I don't want to be the dead one. That's not a dead horse. I'll bring the issue up much, but the idea of going to the NASA channel with this stuff would give, but it's amazing, the comments the young people come back with on that channel. Maybe they may have some ideas for the space that they have they're dealing with on the ground at Goddard rather than the space, you know, miles above us. So they may be very interested in what's happening with this new facility and give some some thoughtful guidance to us, you know. I'm sure they won't. Anyway, I think I understand what I'm saying. It's a it's part of the part of the project, part of the part of the of the of the of the theme, part of the magic of it, the magic, the magic of it.
Thank you for that comment. So with that, is there a motion to approve the final site and building plans?
I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Commissioner Argo.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. The motion is seconded. Ms. Coster, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. The motion was made by Commissioner Dixon, seconded by Commissioner Argo. And with that, Commissioner Trueblood.
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Argo.
Yes.
Vice Chair White.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
Yes.
Commissioner Cash.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Abstain.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg.
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion has carried. Next is Agenda Item 9A, an information presentation on NCPC's Climate Action Plan. Ms. Sheerhold.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission. As you may know, NCPC develops annual sustainability and climate reports per federal requirements and directives. The purpose of today's information presentation is to provide an overview of the latest administrative guidance, introduce the reports we prepared in 2021, and highlight our efforts to identify opportunities to advance climate change adaptation and resilience planning. I'll cover the introduction portion of the presentation before handing it over to my colleagues, who will introduce some of the key components of NCPC's Climate Action Plan. Executive Order 14008, tackling the climate crisis at home and abroad, sets forth a government-wide approach to integrate resilience and climate adaptation considerations into foreign and domestic policy, federal government property management and procurement, infrastructure investment, and resource management. EO 14008 emphasizes planning for climate adaptation and resilience within agency operations and initiatives, and requires federal agencies to develop a climate adaptation and resilience plan called a climate action plan that responds to the climate crisis. In 2021, NCPC submitted two plans to the Office of the Federal Chief Sustainability Officer, our Sustainability Report and Implementation Plan, and our Climate Action Plan. Both plans support the goals and objectives of EO 14008. They are reviewed by the Council on Environmental Quality and the Office of Management and Budget before final publication. And I just want to note that NCPC is considered a contributing agency. We have a smaller operational footprint. We don't own property, manage fleets, fund capital projects, or have an implementation authority, and therefore, we don't have the same impact or reporting responsibilities as larger agencies. The plans we submit are generally executive summaries or shorter reports that focus on actions we can undertake within our authority. The Sustainability Report and Implementation Plan is an executive summary that provides an updated overview of the agency's commitment to advancing sustainability goals in the upcoming fiscal year. It highlights how each NCPC division aims to address sustainability goals within their work plan and operations, and this is something we submit annually. The Climate Action Plan is a longer report that provides an updated climate change vulnerability assessment and highlights opportunities to incorporate adaptation and resilience planning into NCPC core activities, projects, and initiatives. It's a new requirement per EO 14008. This year, we submitted a full plan and will follow up with annual progress reports. So for the rest of the presentation, we'll focus on the components of the Climate Action Plan. This plan identifies how climate change may impact NCPC's ability to achieve our mission. It commits to advancing climate adaptation and resilience planning and prioritizes adaptation actions that reflect current and future climate change risks. Adaptation planning allows NCPC to address the negative impacts of climate that are already occurring and take advantage of opportunities to coordinate and respond effectively to future conditions. Because of our limited authority, we can advance this effort through our role in facilitating and encouraging other federal agencies to improve their climate resilience by participating in interagency efforts that formalize adaptation strategies that will result in greater benefits for the National Capital Region. The vulnerability assessment focuses on risks that impact the National Capital Region, the property and assets that our stakeholders and applicant agencies own and manage. These risks are familiar: increased flooding, extreme precipitation, sea level rise, average temperature rise, and extreme heat, and severe weather events. Individually, they are significant threats, and combined, they can be catastrophic. Last month, NCPC's internet connectivity was impacted by the Schuylkill River flooding caused by Tropical Depression Ida. Resulting widespread damage affected a facility that hosts internet services impacting connectivity for offices throughout the Northeast, including NCPC's. While we worked around it, this is an example of how a severe weather event can impact our immediate the immediate agency functions and pose a threat to government-wide operations. The Climate Plan identifies five priority adaptation actions, which are near-term, long-term, and ongoing opportunities to incorporate climate adaptation goals and policies into our core activities of comprehensive planning, federal capital improvements, project and plan review, and special initiatives. So I'll turn it over to Angela, who will introduce the first two actions.
Thank you, Karen, and good afternoon, commissioners. As you know, the Comprehensive Plan consists of both the federal and district elements and is a blueprint for the long-term development of Washington, D.C. and the region. The federal elements prepared by NCPC includes goals and policies that guide federal development and is the decision-making framework for commission actions on plans, proposals, and policies. As identified in both NCPC's Sustainability and Climate Action Plans, there are opportunities to increase awareness of current climate change risks and include adaptation strategies in the federal elements that plan for and address the impacts of climate change and flooding. In the upcoming year, we'll update the introductory chapter of our Comprehensive Plan to revise the guiding principles and set forth a vision in addressing climate change and equity throughout the federal elements. Following that, we will update the federal workplace element and federal environment element to address risk from climate change, including extreme weather conditions and aging and failing infrastructure. These elements will include new policy guidance to support sustainable development and practices that encourage resiliency planning and climate adaptation strategies. All our policy guidance flow from the Comprehensive Plan, so it's critical for us to take these steps to help guide all our commission actions, including our core activities and future initiatives. Next slide. Each year, NCPC prepares the Federal Capital Improvements Program, which requires NCPC to annually review and recommend a six-year program of federal capital improvement projects for the region. NCPC submits the FCIP when planning and funding with planning and funding recommendations to the Office of Management and Budget, OMB, for use in its preparation of the President's budget. Over the past three years, we made changes to the FCIP report as it's becoming a more relevant tool for OMB. Specifically for our Climate Action Plan, OMB directed that NCPC use the FCIP to ask how applicant agencies are integrating renewable energy, resiliency, climate readiness, and equity in their investment of capital projects. And to also use the FCIP as a tool to help guide applicants to consider climate adaptation and resiliency early in their planning process. We're currently working with OMB on questions that can be considered as part of the FCIP solicitation process. So in the upcoming year, we will incorporate the first set of questions into the FCIP to broadly address the issue. And in the following year, we'll continue to work with OMB and the applicant agencies to refine those questions for the next FCIP cycle. This information will be included in the FCIP report. And now I'll pass along to Matt, who will discuss project and plan review.
Thank you, Angela, and good afternoon, commissioners. So turning to plan review, which again is another core activity of NCPC. As you know, this involves a review of projects across the National Capital Region. NCPC is already strongly engaged in a number of issues related to climate goals. You're you're well familiar with transportation, stormwater management, and tree protection. However, with the administration's really renewed focus on energy, I think we're going to be more direct in discussing this issue with our applicant agencies through the both the consultation process as well as NEPA review. We'll also be asking more specific questions about this topic. In particular, we want to know more about what are applicants doing to increase energy efficiency or reduce usage, and how are applicants promoting renewable energy use? These questions are grounded in the policies found in the Comprehensive Plan, but as we get more specific guidance through future executive orders or other other forms of guidance, our questioning may become more specific. Staff will be particularly focused on these questions at the master plan stage as we as we're just coming out of the NASA discussion, particularly because applicants should be thinking strategically about energy goals at the master plan level. We do feel that this is the best time to engage in these issues and help provide guidance that may influence individual project planning and funding and design decisions as as they move towards implementation. As such, incorporating climate action goals into master plans is is really critical. We'll continue to highlight these topics in the EDRs where appropriate in the same way that we address other executive orders and relevant legislation in in your staff reports today. So there won't be any real change there. However, we will be highlighting some of these topics in in greater detail when appropriate. And then finally, staff will also look at where updates to the submission guidelines might be necessary in the future, particularly if we get more specific guidance or new executive orders. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Karen, who will talk about some of the other actions that are incorporated into the plan.
Thanks, Matt. Next, I'll cover two actions that are part of our special initiatives. First, the Monumental Core Streetscape Project, which the commission last saw in January 2021. NCPC, in collaboration with an interagency working group, is working on an initiative to update the 1992 National Mall Streetscape Manual. The Streetscape Manual framework identifies, categorizes, and provides principles for streets within the manual boundary. The purpose of this effort is to help unify the capital city by improving streetscape standards and transitions among neighborhoods, as well as improving coordination among federal and local jurisdictions. The guideline update is an opportunity to address climate risks and showcase and standardize sustainable design and resilience planning best practices. Next, the final action I'll talk about is our work on flooding. As part of an interagency working group led by the District of Columbia Silver Jackets, NCPC's role is to help facilitate stakeholder coordination and exchange information on flood mitigation and stormwater infrastructure in the region. This working group aims to align efforts among local and federal agencies to protect assets within the capital city. NCPC's 2018 Flood Risk Management Planning Resource Guide summarized 11 climate-informed studies on flooding in the National Capital Region. This is an example of how NCPC and the D.C. Silver Jackets can help other federal This is an example of how NCPC and the DC Silver Jackets can help other federal agencies incorporate climate information into their development activities. NCPC continues to lead and facilitate interagency coordination and collaboration efforts to address climate adaptation in the National Capital Region, where a small agency and climate literacy is critical for management and staff in all divisions. We're committed to engaging local and regional partners to stay informed and exchange information. And as more information and guidance regarding climate change develops, NCPC will continue to incorporate relevant findings into the Comprehensive Plan, FCIP process, our project and plan review process, and our long-range planning activities. Despite our limited authority, our unique role gives us opportunities to enhance climate readiness. As we've mentioned, we can use the review process to facilitate and encourage other federal agencies to improve their climate resilience, and we'll continue to support smarter, climate-resilient investments through our participation in local and regional interagency committees and working groups. We're aware this issue requires current data, a multifaceted approach to understanding the risk, and coordination with our many local, regional, and federal partners. These are just some of the available assessments, reports, plans, and resources we've considered and referenced in developing our sustainability and climate adaptation response. Before we conclude, we'd like to note that NCPC is responding to recent executive orders that established a federal flood risk management standard. The new standard is tougher but flexible, allowing consideration of the 500-year flood, higher base flood elevations, or the use of a climate-informed science approach for federally-funded projects. Fostering resilience is an important aspect of this standard. In response to this new guidance, NCPC has drafted an implementation plan, will also update our agency procedures related to flood standards, work closely with other federal applicant agencies to determine their response to the standard, and encourage coordinated approaches. And the Commission will have briefings on this work in the future. So in summary, NCPC is committed to advancing climate change adaptation and resilience planning that responds to the climate crisis and supports the priorities and goals of EO 14008 and related federal guidance. The climate reporting process is an opportunity to reflect on how our work addresses current climate change risks, aligns with other federal, regional, and local adaptation efforts, and complements other NCPC initiatives. We're coordinating our efforts regarding resilience, climate adaptation, flood risk, sustainability, and equity. Our next step include submitting our next annual Sustainability Report and Implementation Plan and progress reports for the Climate Action Plan. That concludes our presentation. We welcome your feedback, and the team is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Sheerhold, Ms. Dupont, and Mr. Fliss. Any questions for the team? If not, I will open it to the Commission for Discussion, starting with Commissioner Argo, and then go in a round robin format. Please keep your webcams on during the discussion. Commissioner Argo.
I have, that was a really informative and uplifting presentation, in my view. I have no, I have no particular questions or quick questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Sorry.
Um, I don't either, really. Whoops, I forgot my laptop. I, um, well, I always have to flip down because I can't, my laptop is not very big when we're looking at things. I, I, we recently had to comment on something, so I had to look into, to be perfectly honest, I was not paying all that much attention to the Silver Jackets group and what they had done. And it's pretty voluminous and meaningful stuff. So I expect great things out of this, because if the Silver Jackets work product is any indicator. And I have to admit, I was somewhat embarrassed that I wasn't, I knew that everybody was meeting, and I knew what the subject was, but I didn't know what the outcome and the threat that had taken place had produced and all of that. So I look forward to seeing more of the same and better as the focus expands.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
I join my two colleagues with an extra air of excitement about what they have presented. Green is my favorite color, but silver is my second favorite. So silver jackets are great. I also have another thought that I would throw out, which is maybe part of this long-range look. You know, we have parking spaces that are reserved for handicapped. Some places, they even have them for police and pregnant mothers and officers, et cetera. Maybe we should also give some preferential parking to electric vehicles. It may not be chargers, but it may be an incentive for folks to park, to get them, to be able to be a little closer, because they won't get the exercise that the non-electric will get, maybe. But anyhow, just ideas, but I think this is all they've done, and all they're doing is very important, very long-range, very, and it's great. Thank you all for your work. Great job. Keep it up. Silver's good.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash.
No, I'll just echo, I think this is very important work. It was a very informative presentation. I thank you very much for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
I echo the interest and enthusiasm of the Commissioners and don't have anything else to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
I think it was a great presentation. Thank you so much. Looking forward to finding ways to comply with the executive order.
Commissioner Trueblood.
Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, I think we look forward to collaborating with you. Hopefully, you all, I think you all know that as part of the district elements of the Comprehensive Plan, we put resilience-focused areas in. Some include the areas the Silver Jackets are looking, as well as other areas that are federal and local. So I think our work aligns quite nicely, and we look forward to working with you on all of that.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Well, wait for my camera to come on. There it is. Thanks for the presentation. Good to see what the Commission's doing and happy to participate in the efforts. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner May.
Uh, just like to say, I appreciate being able to go last. I would just echo the comments of my colleagues. I don't really have much to add. I would say that, um, I think we're, yeah, the Commission is already a leak promoting sustainability, and that will continue over time. That's what we aspire to do with the Park Service. And I think just, I want to, not only continue to accelerate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, did you want to add a comment?
Yeah, I just think that this may dovetail into our equity work that I know the Commission's working on. There is a parallel here, and there are actions that we are directing in this report that can have some bearing on the equity concerns we have. So I think that's at least a thought.
I think that's a very critical piece of the Climate Action Plan, given the disparities of impact. So thank you for that additional comment. And I too am very excited to see that NCPC is continuing to take a leadership role in addressing this important issue and having it guide our work and all of the projects that we review. So thank you very much for the great work. Next item is number nine B, an information presentation regarding the I-495 and I-270 managed lane studies. We're going to hear from Mr. Weil.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission and Madam Vice Chair. Today, I'm here to brief you on the status of the I-495, 270 managed lane study, and to see mission concurrence on our proposed supplemental environmental impact statement comments, which we plan to send to the state and federal highway administrations prior to the conclusion of the study's public comment period, which ends on November 15th. So here is the agenda that shows you the different parts of my presentation, starting off with a description of how the supplemental EIS relates to the previous draft environmental impact statement, which staff presented to you through an informational presentation in October of 2020. Next, I will go through our review role and point out where the project would require development of parkland that is under NCPC jurisdiction. And then I will walk you through our proposed comments and conclude on the study's next steps. So next slide. Starting off with changes to the state's preferred alternative, known as Alternative Nine Phase One South. This slide illustrates the alternative's reduced scope compared to SHA's previous preferred alternative, which encompassed most of the Maryland side of the Beltway, as shown here in the light blue. Unlike the previous alternative, Phase One South no longer includes managed lanes expansion along the north side of the Beltway between I-270 and I-95, which would have impacted Rock Creek Park. Next slide, Tony. Sligo Creek and Northwest Branch Stream Valley Parks. And you can see those on the slide by the three green dots. Rather, SHA is elected to reduce the scale of the project to include only its initial Phase One construction and to prioritize American Legion Bridge reconstruction, as reflected by the dark blue section of the Beltway on the map. Next slide. The new preferred alternative would still add two new managed lanes in each direction as under the previous Alternative Nine, but only between the George Washington Memorial Parkway, across the American Legion Bridge, and along I-270 to the I-370 Inter County Connector Interchange. Supplemental EIS materials state that SHA and a P3 developer may decide to reevaluate an extension of managed lanes around the north and eastern sides of the Maryland Beltway under future Phases Two and Three, with additional environmental studies to evaluate their potential impacts. However, there are no plans to extend the managed lanes at this time. Next slide. Many of the study's underlying elements remained unchanged, as illustrated here in this table. Its purpose and need, the study's co-lead and cooperating agencies, and the study milestones all remain the same. But the supplemental EIS does reflect an amendment to SHA's preferred alternative, with a focus on only new information, but still referencing information from the previous draft EIS that continues to remain valid. Next slide. Here's the current study schedule, which shows the public comment period for the supplemental EIS, extending from October 1st to November 15th. And then the State Highway Administration plans to release an administrative draft of the final EIS and Record of Decision for Cooperative Agency Review during the spring of next year. And then SHA plans to release a public version of the final EIS and ROD in late spring. Next slide. Regarding our Commission's potential future review role for managed lanes development, there are five land parcels within the Phase One South area that are under NCPC's review jurisdiction, as shown here on this map. Next slide. With three properties under the jurisdiction of the National Park Service and two properties under the jurisdiction of the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission. Next slide. Here's a summary table that shows our different review roles, both advisory and approval, depending on whether this Commission would review the land under the National Capital Planning Act or the CAPR-Crampton Act. And at this point, we believe that we would have approval authority over three park locations. However, this may change based on a title search that is currently being undertaken by the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission. It may be that the Cabin John parks were not acquired with CAPR-Crampton funding. And if this is the case, our total review area would shrink from approximately 25 to 17 acres, with only 3.3 acres of permanent impact area, down from approximately 10 acres, should both Cabin John parcels be included. We note that this potential change is referenced in the supplemental EIS, and the final EIS will reflect the correct land areas under our NCPC review jurisdiction, either with or without the Cabin John parks. Next slide. This slide shows the largest area that may be under our review jurisdiction, a linear strip of parkland in Cabin John Regional Park along the west side of I-270, between Tuckerman Lane and Montrose Road in Montgomery County, encompassing 5.7 acres for widened I-270 lanes, retaining walls, stormwater management, and stream restoration areas, and potential sound walls. Next slide. So before I go through our proposed comments, I would like to quickly update the Commission on several issues that we have commented on previously, and how the supplemental EIS addresses these, including tree replacement. SHA is committed to tree replacement in accordance with National Park Service and NCPC policies on federal parkland. Inter County Connector improvements. SHA is installing new dynamic signage to increase awareness of using the ICC as an alternative travel route between I-95 and Northern Virginia. In terms of traffic monitoring, SHA reports that they will continue to gauge traffic volumes for the remainder of this study and would reflect future traffic volumes in any future managed lane studies. And finally, the state and P3 developer have recently committed additional transit funding, approximately $300 million for transit services in Montgomery County, and $60 million for projects such as the Corridor Cities Transit Way and Bus Rapid Transit along the Maryland 355 Corridor. And this is in part in an effort to help support transit as part of the project. So we do recognize that the State Highway Administration is trying to respond to some of our previous comments on these issues, and we understand that the state will continue to flesh out these commitments and include those in the final EIS and Record of Decision. So here are our proposed comments on the supplemental EIS. And over the next few slides, I will describe the basis for each comment, how SHA addresses each comment area, each topic area through the EIS, and then I will review each comment that we plan to include in a staff letter to the State Highway Administration and Federal Highway Administration after today's presentation. Next slide. Our first comment relates to the study's underlying purpose and need, which continues to remain narrowly focused on expanding highway capacity. And our Commission has commented on this previously in letters and during Commission meetings, and we would like to once again reiterate the point that the state should broaden the scope of the study. Staff believes the narrow focus of the managed lane study continues to be contrary to our Commission's broader, more regional focus on promoting more efficient federal development and encouraging alternative travel amongst federal workers, as reflected in our transportation element policies. In addition, we note the Commission's frequent discussions about travel accessibility challenges and the influence of employee parking on campus planning, design, and siting decisions. And while the managed lanes preferred alternative does include some transit components, we believe that any benefits to transit travel would be far outweighed by the project's benefit to driving in the region. So our proposed comment is a recommendation that the state look even more broadly at how to accommodate future general mobility through the project, which would better reflect our transportation policies and this Commission's focus on fostering efficient federal development in the region. Next slide. Our next comment relates to the CAPR-Crampton Act and the 1931 Agreement with MNCPCC, through which our review focuses on protecting the character and setting of these special parks by ensuring that all development is for park-related purposes. And while managed lanes development that does not encroach on this land would best meet the intent of the CAPR-Crampton Act, our Commission has occasionally considered regional transportation projects to be park-related when providing direct accessibility improvements or usability benefits to a park. Examples include trail improvements, new recreational equipment, safety improvements, adjacent transit stops, and bridge or roadway improvements within the parks. And we would like to note that the EIS does show a menu of potential amenity improvements in addition to stream restoration, stormwater management, and tree mitigation requirements. However, the study does not show where these improvements would be made, nor what these potential amenity improvements would entail. So we would like to make it clear that we must have a better understanding of the specific amenity improvements to be made on CAPR-Crampton land, and this is to ensure that any future managed lane project submissions to NCPC would meet the intent of the CAPR-Crampton Act. Next slide. Our third comment relates to the state's visual impact assessment process, which is described as ongoing and following the Federal Highway Administration's methodology for highway projects. Study materials state that the assessment will focus on the five park locations under NCPC's review jurisdiction, including the Clara Barton Parkway, CNO Canal, and others, and that SHA will include the detailed assessment results and future renderings in the final EIS study documents. However, it is important to keep in mind that staff will need time to review these materials prior to the official public release of the final EIS and ROD. So we request the results of the visual assessment and future and future renderings for comment during the administrative agency review period to allow N C P C staff time to guide mitigation on the land that is under our oversight jurisdiction. Next slide. And our final comment expresses support for our planning partners in the study, M N C P P C and the National Park Service, in that S H A's new preferred alternative, while reduced from its previous scale, would still result in significant impacts to sensitive federal and state parkland. As a future review agency, we do share the National Park Services and the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission's expectation that S H A will work to successfully resolve these outstanding issues in a meaningful and timely manner. Next slide. With that, here are the next steps for us as previously described. We are seeking commission concurrence on our proposed supplemental E I S comments today. And we will convey these and any other additional comments heard from the commission at today's meeting in a staff comment letter to the State Highway Administration and Federal Highway Administration. And then we anticipate an administrative final E I S review period early next year with a public release of the final E I S and Record of Decision in late spring of 2022. So that concludes my presentation, and I welcome your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wile. This is a challenging, this is a challenging project. So do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Wile? If not, I will open it up to the commission for discussion, starting with Commissioner Cash, and then go in a round robin format. Please keep your webcams on for the discussion, and please take it away, Commissioner Cash.
Thanks so much. I mean, very informational, a lot of moving pieces with this project. It's probably going to be with us for quite a while, but I look forward to our future review of it. I know that one of our former colleagues had very strong thoughts on this and kind of missing that at this point. But as we before, sure, we will remember well what we should be looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any additional comments. Thanks.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Great presentation. No questions or comments. Thanks.
Commissioner True Blood.
Thanks for the presentation. I have now seen this a few times, including as I sit on the Transportation Planning Board, which had a few votes on this particular project that I think hopefully, as you saw here, brought about, I think, some of the language around things like the Capitol Corridors Project. So I think that's critical. And I, you know, so as you put together the the letter, I think we, as a commission, should think about how important it is to support those transit, you know, the other options, the transit options. So however strong we can be about that, I know you had some language, I think, in the purpose and need section. So I would support being as strong about that. I know you have language in there now, but I think if we can really push that, that's quite important moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon. I know he had to step away for a moment. I thought he may be back. I'll come back to him. Commissioner May.
Yes, I do have a few comments. And I would note upfront, the National Park Service has its own particular interest in this. And so we will be providing our own comments on this supplemental draft E I S before the deadline. But just to share a few, a few comments on this. Just to reiterate, the park, the project will impact C N O National Historical Park, George Washington Parkway, and the Clara Barton Parkway. With the change, the preferred alternative impacts to the Baltimore Washington Parkway, Greenbelt Park, and Sutland Parkway have been eliminated. And the George Washington Parkway impacts have been greatly reduced. However, there are still significant impacts on the C N O National Historical Park as well as Clara Barton Parkway. 3.3 acres of permanent use of our lands for the replacement of the American Legion Bridge. National Park Service continues to work with federal highways and Maryland State Highways on a regular basis to reduce the size of the construction access road and the number of trees required to be removed. The bike trail alignment, threatened and endangered species impacts, wetland impacts, cultural resource impacts, and mitigation. It really is an astounding number of threatened rare, threatened, and endangered species that are affected by this. I mean, over 100. It's really phenomenal, something that we don't normally see. As well as 1,200 trees that would be impacted under the current configuration. So we are working hard with Maryland State Highways to reduce those impacts. We did submit our concurrence with the selection of the preferred alternative with comments. As we we stipulated that additional work will be needed to further reduce the impacts in several areas, which I already mentioned some. It's the I think the key thing that changed for us is that the removal of the components that would have affected Baltimore Washington Parkway. When that was taken out, it moved us into a position where we could at least concur on the selection of the preferred alternative. Doesn't mean that we've agreed that this is acceptable at this point. Just that it became something that we could consider because the impacts of the Baltimore Washington Parkway were going to be so severe that we were considering whether it would constitute an impairment. And for those of you who don't dwell in the world of National Park Service decision-making, an impairment is something that we simply cannot do. It is not legal for us to make a decision that would cause an impairment to the park. And so we would not have been able to perceive anything in that area on the Baltimore Washington Parkway if it had continued on that course. In any case, the construction access road in particular remains a very significant issue for C N O Canal National Historical Park. The access road is envisioned in some areas to be 40 feet wide, which is just, you know, it's extraordinary, large and impactful. And we are working with Maryland State Highways to reduce those, the impacts from that. That particularly, along with everything else. I do appreciate the comments of the staff or developing. And, you know, we have some slight areas where between our respective agencies, we need to clarify, you know, who has authority to do what or say what. But I think generally speaking, we are in sync. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Commissioner Argo.
Appreciate very much those, the, those extensive comments from Commissioner May, which gives, at least gives me hope that somebody, somebody that is in a significant position to continue to watch what's happening there and particularly to protect the parkland. I think that's, it's just huge. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Well, this, I don't know if this is a model planning process, or I mean, or after all is said and done, or the opposite. It certainly has been a rough ride. And, and the considerably scaled back scope of the thing is, is I guess I won't understand or why it's come about until we have a little historical perspective and somebody writes the story after all is said and done. But it certainly has been painful to get here. And, and I know some of the conversations we had about dynamic signage and all that way back, probably two meetings ago, maybe a couple of years now, were really disappointing in the unwillingness to try. Those were conversations having to do with 200 and whether or not it was yet at capacity, for those of you who are around and recall that conversation. So I, I'm glad that it's reduced in scale. And I will be watching for further development. Well, I read it. It's always in the newspaper and, and I'm not really quite sure where the whole thing is going to land, like everyone, but I it's been a long time in coming. And I hope, I hope the outcome is what we all hope for. I'm trying really hard here. So I'm going to cut it off before I say something else. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon.
I noticed that everybody started off with either a chuckle or a moan and a groan as they spoke. First, let me thank the staff because it's complicated and they've done very well with it, and it's a struggle. I was also going to say that there are a lot of moving parts. Then after hearing Peter's statement, I realized they're not only moving parts, but they're moving things like the animals. And then we got non-moving things like trees. And it's, but it's, and I think this is really a work that is still going to be in progress with the changing nature of vehicles and how they're driven and not driven by automated. I think that's going to change some of this usage. But I want to associate myself with Mr. True Blood because he, he's on top of this stuff from my perspective, certainly at the city level. And thank Peter for his informative presentation about things and et cetera. So I, it's just very interesting. I just think this is going to be ongoing and it's going to be evolving. So this stuff makes it harder. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner McMahon.
Thanks. I really have not a whole lot more to add to what the other commissioner said. Obviously, a huge regional project with regional implications. So we'll continue to watch it from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to add a few comments. I'm happy to learn that the expansion into the parklands north of the Beltway is off the table for now. The central concern I have, not just with this project, but transportation planning in our country, is the thinking that expanding our freeways is the solution to solving traffic congestion. And there's been all kinds of studies and conversations that exist that tell us that expanding freeways results in induced demand. And there's a recent article I asked the staff to share with the commissioners in Bloomberg, the title, "The Unstoppable Appeal of Highway Expansion." And I think we have to grapple with it as a country. And I know where we review these projects, we grapple with the individual process, our project. But I think we need to take a step back and think about how do we continue as an agency, and I think we do a good job, don't get me wrong. But how do we continue to push on this question of how to do better holistic transportation planning? And are there ways that we can impact the process and at least lift up the dialogue? I do think that the Biden administration is pushing very hard on this to look at how all of the elements that we need to make our communities work need to be sustainable and informed by the Climate Action Plan that we just discussed. So I want to think about how we can continue, not just as we review an individual project, but is there some kind of forum or ongoing conversation that we can host to really take a look at these transportation projects? Because the purpose and need is always very narrowly defined. And we all have to push and push and push to make sure that all the impacts get addressed. So I agree with everyone's comments. I really appreciate, Mr. Wile, what you've had to wrangle with this. It's a beast of a project. And these, all of these types of transportation projects are. But I think we need to continue to wrestle with this and think about, again, how do we lift up the conversation so that we're not just in a position of having to react to a particular project, but maybe help change policy for how projects are planned from the get-go? And thinking about what Commissioner Wright said, you know, is this a model planning process? I'd say not, but not from the fault of anyone involved. It's working within the existing system. So I think we need a paradigm shift. Not easy, but we need to start, you know, really pushing on that. So I appreciate everyone's willingness to really think about this and continue to evaluate our comments on this project in that vein. Yes, sir.
I also want to add that there are a lot of, we're in a very blessed position to be able to come up with policies that are hopefully well thoughtful and balanced and concerned. Unfortunately, there are a lot of forces out there we're dealing with here. There's a huge highway construction push, financial, like the military industrial complex. It's like the drug complex. And so we have to be really careful and strong in our positions because we are not, I don't believe we are directly affected by them. But we need to speak out in a, in a, in a clear manner, which is what you're suggesting. Because there are other forces at the, at some other ends that are working for their own purposes, even when it comes to solar. I mean, there are people who still want to use fossil fuels. So it's a, we are in a blessed position to be able to try to say something that makes sense and that's right. And I'm proud of us and the staff for doing that and being there.
I appreciate that. And as we keep going through this project, I think it's going to be really interesting to hear, you know, just on the example of investing and, you know, putting money forward to invest in public transit. Okay, what does that mean for this project? How do we evaluate all of the elements as we're evaluating these projects? But your point is well taken, and I appreciate that perspective. So if anyone wants to make further comments or ask questions, please do so now.
I, I want to be clear on what I, when I said, well, speculating as to whether or not this is a model process. It, I mean, because of, of the reduction in scope that, that happened as a result of of pushback is what I'm referring to. I would, I wouldn't. Because of community participation, I can't say that I know for certain what the direct, what the reduction in scope is the result of. I mean, clearly, there was a lot of politics. But, and how much, that's what I was getting at. How much did the backlash by the public and planners contribute to the reduction in scope? I can't speak to that, but understanding that one day will be important for exactly what you're talking about, Beth, which is, you know, something's got to change because the fact that some of these alternatives were even on the table is kind of alarming. I'm not a transportation planner, but I know enough to know that what you stated in your, your first comments were, are fact. It's been explained to me a couple of times with pictures and drawings even.
And data.
And I, I can't, I understand it, but I can't explain it. And I think it's counterintuitive. Most people believe that more lanes will bring relief. And I, I know that that is, I also believe that that is not true, but I can't explain why. And I think a public education campaign would be very useful for, for a lot of us to understand it in more detail because this, this problem is only going to get worse. I mean, not just on the Capitol Beltway, but everywhere.
Well, that's right. No, that's right. And I appreciate, and I understood what you meant. I think it is laudable that there was engagement from the community, from planners, from agencies. And I do think that that helps, and it's important that people engage in the process. I was just taking a step back and, and thinking about, as you said, how do we affect a bigger change and a better understanding of what we're trying to achieve with our transportation planning? And especially in light of the changes and all of the the T M Ps that we review for master plans. And everyone's trying to do modeling and projections. But we're in a period of real significant change, and I think we have to really grapple with it on a whole different level. So thank you very much for the clarification, Commissioner. So thank you very much for the clarification, Commissioner Wright. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Dixon, I see your hand raised. I don't know if that was from a previous comment or if you want to make a further comment. I just wanted to check. Okay, I saw the hand went down. Okay.
It was a previous question, and thank you for that. And we're fighting this right in our Congress now about how we allocate those resources, which affects what we're talking about. Is it going to be highways? Is it going to be this, that, or the other? So it's contemporary and timely.
Yep, absolutely. Well, thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Wile. This concludes our open session agenda. The commission will meet again next, on Thursday, November 4th, at 1:00 p.m. And if there is no other business to come for us, the open session is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.